Hello, welcome to our next lecture, Everson v. Board of Education. This case gets into the wall of separation between church and state. We covered that in our last lecture about that phrase that Thomas Jefferson used. That is now probably in our common parlance, right? You've probably have heard that expression before, separation between church and state. And so we're going to start digging into that. What does that mean? Where did that come from? Does that apply both sides? Does that mean the church cannot affect the state as much as the state cannot affect a church? Is it a one-sided transaction? What is the nature of that phrase? So, Everson v. Board of Education, we're going to look at the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment. First Amendment, of course, has several rights given, freedom of speech, press, assembly, petition. But in particular, we're looking at that first clause there. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." So hopefully at this point in our semester, we're starting to recognize some patterns that come up with regard to how judges determine their positioning, how they determine their reasoning. There is ongoing debates as to whether judges will have a end result in mind and then reason their way to get there, or if they'll take more of the approach of look at the law, reason their way through, and see if they can get to the conclusion. Here, we should start seeing at least some semblance of there's an end in mind and we're going to reason our way toward there. Whether that is in fact establishing and fervently holding to that wall of separation, or if that is more of a, no, this law that we're going to look at is more of a neutral, and how do we come up with a reasoning to get to that conclusion? So, we have the First Amendment, we know that's going to be the law. That's particularly at issue here in reconciliation of this New Jersey statute that basically provided for reimbursement to parents for their children's transportation cost. So let's start getting to the facts of the case here. So, kids go to school. Right, shocker, oh my goodness, kids need to be educated. How best to educate children is, of course, a question that's been asked for centuries, right? Since the beginning of any sort of schooling, going all the way back, you can see it in the Old Testament, you can see it in the New Testament, and of course throughout the rest of our modern history here. So, kids go to school, governments are established in certain ways to provide public school, depending on, you know, where we start tracking that history. But a big issue, of course, is how do you get the students to the schools? So, public transportation is a wonderful, wonderful feature of a lot of cities. Some towns, of course, will have more sparse perhaps, public transportation. But this concept of getting students to their respective locations for education is kind of the pertinent component here of this case, the facts of this case. So, students get on the bus, they go to school. But of course, as you've read in the case, some students went to public school and some students went to a private school, a Catholic parochial school. So, no issue so far, but part of that is that the parents had to provide funds to get their students on the bus, of course, to pay that bus fare to get them to the school. And because there was not school buses, right, that would normally take students to the schools, the city decided to reimburse parents for that bus fare. Okay, so not really an issue right now. Students go to school, in order to get to school, they have to be transported. In order to be transported, parents have to pay the money. And this school district, in particular, decided to reimburse parents for the bus fare. Not that big of an issue, right? Okay, does it matter which school they're going to? That becomes the issue of this case, right? A, I believe it's unnamed, or unrelated, I should say, taxpayer decided to sue, challenging this statute as unconstitutional. His argument was basically that this law respected the establishment of religion. Okay, how, right? Well, because the bus that's transporting the students, sure, may be going to public school here, but it was also sending kids to a private school, a Catholic parochial school that took place, of course, within a Catholic church. Okay, so tax dollars now are going to fund, again, reimbursed to the parents, are now going to fund and reimburse parents for sending their students not only to public school, because the parents that decided to send their kids to public school, but also to parents that decided to send their kids to private school, to schools in particular that were teaching the Catholic doctrine and the Catholic faith. So, the argument, as the taxpayer wants to claim and make, is that this law, this reimbursement law promulgated by this New Jersey School District here, basically respected the establishment of religion. Basically said, okay, you know what, we'll actually reimburse you for transportation costs to send your student to this Catholic private school. So because the law itself respects the establishment of religion, then it is unconstitutional, and then going back again to Marbury v. Madison, because the law is unconstitutional, mainly because it violates the First Amendment, that law has to be struck down. In the more particular sense, his argument would be, my tax dollars are going to fund the establishment of religion, right, or supporting students or families that are sending their students to Catholic school. So because my tax dollars are being used to respect or establish the Catholic faith, it's a violation of my constitutional rights, therefore this law needs to be struck down. All right, it's an interesting argument, right? It's an interesting thing to start teasing with, or pulling apart, because there's a number of implications that come from it, right? So if this was just a normal school bus, if this was just a normal run-of-the-mill, kids get on the bus, go to public school, public school's over, they get on the bus, they come home, there's really not, there's not an issue, right? It's the fact that this bus, or you know, whatever kind of mode of transportation here, is going and dropping kids off at this Catholic church so that those students could be educated there, under, of course, the Catholic faith and the Catholic doctrine, that becomes the essential component of this case. Again, no issue if it was just public school. If this was the same policy with regard to, there's no school buses, right? Like the school district or the parish doesn't have school buses, so they have to use the city buses, parents have to get their kids to school. So rather than perhaps buying a whole fleet of school buses, the city, or excuse me, the school district decided to reimburse the parents for the bus fare. No issue so far, except now when you're sending students to private schools and schools that would profess and teach doctrines of a certain religion, namely Catholicism, this taxpayer, perhaps rightly so, challenges this law on constitutional grounds. So, now we're squared up, now we're ready for, okay. Does this law, this New Jersey School District law that would otherwise, or excuse me, would reimburse parents for sending their students to schools, does that violate the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment? Okay, so what does the court get into here? The court looks at sort of a neutral approach. The majority opinion, and I believe this was a five-four decision, so very, very narrow margin here, right? One way or another, this case could have been decided on other grounds. So the court and the majority opinion puts forth a lot of, I think, interesting arguments. And of course, we'll be able to dig into those more during our reflection questions this week. But they bring up this concept of neutrality, that it's not so much that Catholic families, for example, are being paid by the government, it's that the school district is deciding to neutrally reimburse parents who are sending their students to school via public transportation. Doesn't matter, in other words, if they're going to public school, or private school, or Catholic school, or any other kind of school system. If those parents decide to send their students to school via public transportation, then the law's in place to be applied neutrally so that any parent can be reimbursed. Court uses this analogy of public utilities, right? If the school, for example, is on fire, right? And fire department's called Public Utility Taxes that go to help fund most fire departments, then all of a sudden, we're not asking this question, right? It's a no-brainer, we're just, yeah, of course that fire department is going to put out the fire. Does it matter if it was a Catholic school, right? Does it matter if that fire truck was driving to the Catholic school? Do they have to pump the brakes and say, wait a second, is this a Catholic church? Are we violating the Establishment Clause? No, right, there's a fire, the fire department puts out fires, so the fire truck goes to put out the fire. If it was a public school, it wouldn't make a difference, it's the same thing. The building's on fire, it doesn't matter if it's a public school, it's going to go, the fire department's going to go and do its job. Same thing with police officers, right? If we can imagine a society or a town that wouldn't, that wasn't completely filled with automobiles, for example, and students are walking to and fro, they're walking their neighborhoods to get to the schools, wherever they may be situated in the neighborhood, and there's particularly busy streets, and perhaps you have these in your city or town, but there's, for example, crossing guards. Sometimes those could be police officers. So let's say, let's just take that example and run with it. The police officer isn't going to stop a student that's walking, you know, with her backpack or her bookbag or whatever else, and say, hey, are you going to Catholic school? Oh, then I'm not going to direct traffic for you. No, it just, the police officer is there to direct traffic, to stop traffic when necessary, to escort children or other people across the street. That service is provided on a neutral basis. So in other words, it doesn't matter where that student's coming from, it doesn't matter where that student's going to. The fact of the matter is, there is a person there, a part of society, that is using public spaces, right? The sidewalks, for example, the roads, for example. And so in the same way, that service is provided in a neutral basis, on a neutral basis there. So, student could very well say, you know, I'm got a name tag, right? Like, my name is Margaret and I'm going to Catholic school. Police officer's not going to stop and say, wait a second, tax dollars pay my salary, I can't help you cross the street, because that would be establishing, respecting your Catholic religion, your Catholic beliefs. No, right, we live in a society that is blessed to have a fire department, blessed to have police officers that help a well-ordered and functioning society prosper and continue. And it's the same thing with utilities, for example. The church themselves would be connected to water and electricity and sewage. And the church itself couldn't operate, maybe, you know, back in the day, right? We're not necessarily talking about that, but in modern society, those utilities are provided via the government, right? The city itself is the one, or the municipality is the one that establishes those things, that tax dollars go to fund and construct and repair and maintain all those sort of things. But it's not a question of, well, wait a second, this is a Catholic church, or wait a second, this is a Baptist church, or wait a second, this is a Presbyterian church. Oh, can't deliver water there, right, or can't deliver police officers there, or can't put out the fire that's going on in the back, because, ooh, no, that would be respecting the establishment of their religion, we can't do that. No, right, that doesn't go through our minds. And we wouldn't think to delineate between those two, namely, the public sphere, the public welfare, and the religious welfare, in those sort of instances. Fair enough, right? So the court is reasoning and saying, well, it's the same principle here. The school district has ultimately decided to reimburse parents who are sending their students to school via public transportation. So in other words, they're not thinking of, well, are you sending your students to Catholic school? Are you sending your students to a Baptist school? Are you sending your students to any other kind of Christian school? No, right, they're not thinking through that, they're just saying, oh, I see that you're using public transportation to send your student to a given school of perhaps the parent's choice. So here's that reimbursement, right? We're going to reimburse you for those expenses. Court basically couches its entire holding on this sort of analogy of public utilities are used universally and neutrally, and this law is applied neutrally. So there is no respecting the establishment of religion. Okay, fair enough, right? Now, the majority opinion still makes this claim. Still makes the claim that there is a wall of separation, impregnable, I think is what they say. The wall of separation that needs to be impregnable, should never be broached or breached, should never be torn down, there has to be this stark wall of separation between church and state. The dissenting opinions say the same thing, but perhaps they look at it a little bit differently. So the question now, to start turning in the back of our mind, is, okay, if both sides are saying there is a wall of separation between church and state, and both adamantly say, we have to maintain that wall of separation, it is a fundamental concept within our constitutional framework, then how do they land on both sides of this issue, right? Because either we have this concept of, yep, it's neutrally applied, so that wall of separation continues, or it's not neutrally applied, right? In fact, it does respect the establishment of religion by virtue of paying parents, essentially, to send their kids to private, religious, Christian, whatever it may be, school. Okay, so perhaps the question for our purposes now, is the wall of separation only from the perspective of state to church? Or is it from church to state? Or should it be on both sides? So in other words, is there ever a point in time where the state can influence and should influence, or has the ability to respect the establishment of the church? And vice versa, is there ever a point in time where the church can influence or impact the state? Or is this a two-way street here? Is this, I wish I had a graphic here where both guys are standing on the wall, could have thought that one through a little bit more. But is it both sides, right? So by no means should or can the state affect the church, and by no means can the church affect the state. So that's sort of the operational questions we need to start asking as we dig into the opinion a little bit more. Okay, slide over here to the case. Okay, so this week, you'll see that I did not fill out the facts, the issue, the holding, or the analysis. It's a good time to start working those muscles as well. So start listing out the facts, start listing out the issue, what is the court's holding, and what are some of the analysis used? It's a good place to take notes, as well as in the margin as well, whatever your kind of note system may be. Most important part though is, when you're reading these cases, stuff that you don't understand, start making a note of that, stuff that you understand, and it'll come with practice again, like we talked about. When those sort of terms of art jump up out at you, those are good things to circle, highlight, whatever it may be. But we're reading cases within this framework. So what's going on, what are the relevant facts? Like we just covered, what's the issue, what's the pertinent issue, what's the holding? What does the court ultimately conclude? What's that meat, basically, that we're going to take away from the case and be able to use throughout other cases? And then the analysis as well, which is also very important, how did the court get there? And so like I said, from, I believe, the beginning of this lecture, that was the last lecture, yeah. At what point in time the court already has its conclusion in mind and then reasons its way there versus having, in theory, a carte blanche, and then reasoning to get to a conclusion? Here, it's just worth asking, I don't necessarily need to give my opinion on this, but as you're reading through this case, it may be interesting to even do a little bit of your own research to figure out how this sort of issue, a very contested issue, right? We still see this sort of issue play out in our modern society. And this was written in forty-seven, yeah, forty-seven, I believe. So this concept of church and state, people have their opinions about it, regardless of necessarily what the law says. And so as we start thinking through, again, those questions of, is it just state to church? Or is it state and church? Where is that wall of separation? How do we analyze this? It may be worthwhile to just think about this, okay. How would these justices, with their own personal biases, and maybe implicit or otherwise, how does their reasoning perhaps get skewed? Or how does their rhetoric shift when they are thinking about these sort of deep personal convictions, like religious beliefs? Okay, let me keep scrolling. Okay, the Establishment of Religion Clause, the First Amendment, means at least this, or in the majority opinion. Neither a state nor the federal government can set up a church. Okay, neither can pass laws which aid one religion, aid all religions, or prefer one religion over another. Okay, so far, so good, right? As the majority is thinking about this question of the wall of separation between church and state, right now, they're thinking about how can or should, if ever, the state, the government, impact, influence, control, respect the church or religion? So so far, okay, state can't establish a church, it's a good one. And it cannot pass any laws which aid, which support, right? One religion, aid all religions, prefer one religion over the other. That would be a bad scenario, as dissent will point out, which, I mean, really, the majority points out as well, but keep that in mind too. Neither can force nor influence a person to go to or to remain away from church against his will, or force him to profess belief or disbelief in any religion. No person can be punished for entertaining or professing religious beliefs or disbeliefs for church attendance or non-attendance. No tax, in any amount, large or small, can be levied to support any religious activities or institutions, whatever they may be called, or whatever form they may adopt to teach or practice religion. Neither a state nor the federal government can openly or secretly participate in the affairs of any religious organizations or groups, and vice versa. So to quote Jefferson, like we saw in the last case, "The clause against establishment of religion by law was intended to erect a wall of separation between church and state." So, quick legal caveat, hopefully I don't lose my train of thought on that. The Fourteenth Amendment is basically how the court here is applying the First Amendment to the individual states. We may dive on this a little deeper, but this is pretty high-level legal maneuvering here that the Supreme Court has done, not necessarily with the First Amendment, I think this is the first case where they do this. But if you'll read closely, First Amendment says, "Congress", so like, "the federal government shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion." The Supreme Court here is basically using the Fourteenth Amendment to apply the First Amendment to the states. It's a little tangential issue there, it's important for legal analysis and jurisprudence, but for our purposes here, just know that Fourteenth Amendment does a lot of things, but it's basically a vehicle to get the Bill of Rights, the first ten amendments, applied to the states. So of course, in this case, we're dealing with New Jersey, I believe. And so normally, we would think, well, wait a second, we're only talking about the federal government and the First Amendment. Fair enough, the court at this point in time, as well as other points in time, basically used the Fourteenth Amendment to apply the First Amendment, as well as, again, the other nine, the first nine, the first ten Bill of Rights amendments, the Bill of Rights to states. Okay, now we're coming back in. So, majority's opinion here seems to suggest that the state, the government, can do nothing to establish, or really have a say in religion, okay? So so far, we're looking at it and saying, okay, the government is on the side of that wall. So they can't breach that wall, go into the church. We're not going to make any laws that force religious practices, or that would dissuade religious practices. That includes taxing, we're not going to use tax of churches, because all of a sudden, that could open up the door, the Pandora's Box of, well, certain churches are taxed more, right? And requirements for certain taxing. We don't want that to happen. We're not going to take attendance, we're not going to take beliefs. I mean, simply put, federal government should have nothing to do, as well as states. Federal government and states should have nothing to do with the church. Here's that wall of separation between church and state that Jefferson talked about. So in this case, that's how the majority opinion is looking at this. Again, we have, have my fancy illustrations here, let's see if I can get back to them. We have the government paying, reimbursing, really, the families for the bus fare to send their students to school. So they're not paying the parents to send their child to a religious school. The government is simply reimbursing on a neutral playing field parents who have decided to send their students to school via public transportation. Religion never comes up, in other words, we don't have to ask, where are you sending your students to? Oh, you're sending your students to a Catholic school? We're not going to do it. No, 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 the law just looks at and says, okay, we have that wall of separation up, we're not trying to respect or influence or otherwise decide where you're going to go to school. We're simply saying, oh, I see that you have paid money to our public transportation system to send your child to school. We're not going to ask, where did you go? We simply acknowledge that you did that, and so here's reimbursement, right? Here's money to go ahead and get your student using the transportation system. Court goes on, "The amendment, the First Amendment, requires the state to be neutral in its relation, or excuse me, neutral in its relations with groups of religious believers and non-believers. It does not require the state to be their adversary. State power is no more to be used so as to handicap religions than it is to favor them." Okay, so far, so good, right? Parents have sent their students, their children, to school via public transportation. The law provides, the New Jersey law provides reimbursement. We're not asking, okay, are you going to a Christian school? Are you going to any kind of religious school, or are you going to public school? No, 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 we're neutral in the application of this law. So when we reimburse, we're not having to ask this question of where you're sending your child to. Because if the law did that, well then, all of a sudden, we're opening up this Pandora's Box, right? Oh, you're sending your kid to Catholic school? Yeah, no reimbursement for you. Oh, you're sending your school, your child to a, whatever, non-nominational Christian school? Sure, we'll do that. Or, oh, you're sending your child to the same school that I'm sending my child to? Yeah, absolutely, we'll reimburse that. The majority opinion is pointing this out, saying, we do not want that, we want it to be neutral in its application. So the more sort of qualifications that you're putting on when and how reimbursement is taking place, the more it could look like you could be handicapping, right? Just favoring religious schooling, in the same way that you could be favoring them, and you could be supporting them. So if we're neutral in our application, then there's no issue. That's what the majority opinion's looking at. It's almost kind of like a, don't ask, don't tell, right? We're going to kind of cover our eyes and, oh, okay, you said that you're sending your student to school using public transportation, here you go. Oh, you said you're sending your student to school using public education, here you go. And making that sort of blind reimbursement, rather than asking these questions of... Where, right? Where are you sending your student? Because as soon as they start asking those questions. We're out of the realm of neutrality and we start looking at whether state power is being used to handicap religions. Or whether it is to favor them. So uh, it's gonna, let's, let's stay on that. Example real quick. Let's say that the bus system was set up in a way. Where students that were going to public school had to pay a dollar. But students that were going to any other school, private school. Had to pay three dollars. Whoa. Right? Because now all of a sudden. It looks like it's handicapping any parent or family student that's deciding to go to a non-public school, a private school. Whether it's religious or not, if it has religious teachings, it's maybe important in this example, but. Again, the neutrality is the important concept here. So if the state, if the, if the city is deciding, okay. Where are you going? Oh, you're going to public school? That's only a dollar and we'll reimburse you. Next kid gets on. Okay, where are you going? Oh, you're going to Catholic school? Okay, that's three dollars and you're not gonna be reimbursed. That looks like it's uh biased, right? It looks like it's dissuading. Or otherwise inhibiting or discriminating against a person's religious practice. So the court's saying, look, that's not happening here, right? They don't necessarily use that analogy, but they, they're looking at the neutrality of the situation. So there's no. Uh, questions, there's not a criterion here of. Oh, you're going to public school? You're not going to public school. It's just applied neutrally across the board. So then the conclusion here. First amendment has erected a wall between church and state. That wall must be kept high and impregnable. We cannot approve the slightest breach. So the, the majority is still thinking through this and saying, look, the, the state cannot do anything to. Uh, favor religion. As much as it cannot do anything to handicap. Religion, right, to, to. Dissuade or inhibit people from practicing their religious beliefs. It has to be neutral in its application. Fair enough. I think that's, I think that's fairly reasonable here. We looked at the facts, we saw how it was gonna be applied. So what, what's the big deal? How could? Anyone, uh, dissent, right? How could anyone disagree with this? Well. Let's get into it. So the first, uh, dissent here. Brings up this example of. The whole public utility example. Get back to this slide real quick. Oh. There we go. So, right, the court brought up the point of fire trucks not gonna ask, oh, is this a Catholic school? Police officers aren't gonna ask, oh, are you gonna Cath- are you going to Catholic school? The utilities are gonna ask, oh, is this a Catholic school? So what does the dissent have to say about that? It seems to me that the basic fallacy in this court's reasoning, which accounts for its failure to apply the principles it avows. Is in ignoring the essentially religious test by which beneficiaries of this expenditure are selected. A policeman protects a Catholic, of course. But not because he is a Catholic, it is because he is a man and a member of our society. The fireman protects the church school, but not because it is a church school. It is because it is property, part of the assets of our society. So, so, so far, so good, right? We, yeah. We're not asking the question of, are you a Catholic? Okay, now I'll let you escort across the street. Here's the, here's the argument. Neither the fireman nor the policeman has to ask before he renders aid, is this man or building identified with the Catholic Church? But before the school. Authorities draw a check to reimburse for a student's fair, they must ask just that question. And if the school is a Catholic one, they may render aid because it is such. While if it is of any other faith or is run for profit, the help must be withheld. Maybe, right? Maybe. If, if this concept is true, that the person writing the check or the government writing the check to reimburse uh, families for. Their expenditure of public transportation has to figure out. Where that student's going to school. Then yeah, it would seem as though this is not neutral. It would seem as though all of a sudden. We, the government, uh, are knowingly writing checks to families that are sending their students to. A religious school, right, a, a Christian school or Catholic school or any other kind of non-public school. The dissent continues. It was intended not only, the first amendment. It was intended not only to keep the state's hands out of religion. But to keep religions' hands off the state. And above all, to keep bitter religious controversy out of public life by denying to every denomination. Any advantage from getting control of public policy or the public purse. Okay, so he's, the dissent is teeing up this argument that, wait a second, this isn't neutral. Sure, if the police officer is rendering aid, he's not asking. Whether this person's Catholic or whether this person's going to Catholic school, whether it's a Catholic church. They are just doing their job as part of their function in society. But the linchpin here, I believe. Is this deeper concept that the first amendment is set up in a way. To keep church and state completely separate. So in other words, we're not just looking at it. From the government's point of view and seeing the wall. But the church itself is also looking at that wall and can't get to the government. Why? Well. As soon as someone can start claiming public policy or public welfare, which is part of the majority's opinion. Why it's important to educate children. Then. The wall basically comes down, right? If, if we can contrive an argument that says, look, this, this and that and the other for public policy reasons. Then law could be applied on a neutral basis that would ultimately benefit a certain select group that could in fact be. A religious group. So his. Um. Claim here perhaps, or at least a linchpin, like I said. Was that that first amendment is, is two-sided, right? Not only to keep the state's hands out of religion, but to keep religions' hands off of the state. And above all, to keep bitter religious controversy. Out of public life. So that you cannot get control of that public policy or the public purse. Okay, so his opinion or dissent, excuse me, is, is good to kind of start thinking through, like I said, from the beginning. Is this only looking at the state's impact on the church? Is this church's impact on the state? Is it both-sided? How should we start reconciling the first, or the, the establishment clause of the first amendment? With regard to Congress making no law respecting an establishment of religion or. Prohibiting the free exercise thereof. Thomas Jefferson looked at it and said, there is a wall of separation between church and state. But the Constitution doesn't provide anything about the church. Not affecting or influencing or undermining. The government, right? It doesn't say that. We're back to the Constitution, just reading those words. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. Both sides of this opinion are looking at the wall of separation between church and state. Majority takes more the approach that if it's neutral in its application, it's fine. As soon as the, the state. Starts becoming biased one way or another. Again, favoring the church or inhibiting the church. Or religion, really, just across the board. That's when it runs afoul of the first amendment. This first dissent at least is looking at it and saying, well. Okay, all good and well, but it's not neutral. One, and two, it, it's a two-way streak here. So we care. Just as much as what the, the state is doing to. Establish, respect. Uh, religion as much as we care about what the church is doing to. Persuade or. Use the government to fulfill its own purposes. Okay, moving on to Justice Frankfurter, or sorry, Justice Rutledge's dissent. Okay, so he gets into much more of the overview in the history of this debate. Uh, this debate has been going on since the beginning of our country, beginning of the United States, this concept of. Separation, again, of church and state. We don't want a government ordained, a state sanctioned church that is. Uh, compelled in attendance. We, we just don't want that to happen. Uh, we love religious freedom. We love to worship. Um, the way that we feel convicted and compelled by through scripture. We want that to be our guiding force. We do not want a government saying. This is the way you're going to practice. We want scripture to inspire and ultimately guide. Our religious practices so that if a church or church leader or congregation, whatever it may be, starts going off in a. Non-biblical, is that the right word? Unbiblical, uh, practice or church practice. Then we have scripture to fall back on and say, no, 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 this is the way it's going to be set up, rather than a. Government saying, this is the only way we can practice. Having that sort of government, state-sponsored, state-sanctioned religion starts taking us away. From scripture and starts putting us back in the purview of. What can man think of? What can fallen man, sinful man think of and contrive? To ultimately form. Church in his image at that point. So rather than have that, we don't want that. We want to stay within. Our deeply held convictions with regard to church as inspired by the word of God. We stay away from government giving us church. Now, the question is still asked, though, within our legal minds, right, in our legal framework, is we have the Constitution that says. Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of, of religion and prohibiting the free exercise thereof. And we, I think we enjoy that, we want that. Where do we draw the line then with regard to how church influences the state? And what really is what, what, uh, Justice Rutledge gets into here? Did Thomas Jefferson have in mind, uh, and James Madison have in mind, too? When they had these initial debates before the first amendment was ratified? So. Let me pause right there for just a moment. Uh. This opinion is like forty-some odd pages. Uh, if you look through it, though. You'll see that there's, uh, appendices. It includes. Uh, memorial in. Remonstrance, I hope I'm saying that right, against religious. As assessments. That can't be right. Assessments. There we go. That, um. Believe James Madison. Wrote. In response to, keep scrolling. A bill establishing provision for teachers of the Christian faith. So this was a bill, uh, in Virginia, I believe, that was. Promulgated by a group of people that wanted to provide certain protections for teachers of the religious faith, or the Christian faith. Madison felt compelled as well as pressured to, uh, draft this response. Uh, against religious assessments. The court, uh, considers this, but the dissent of Justice Rutledge gets into this in particular. So. They included it, the, the court included it in its appendices to its opinion. It's there, free to read. It's there for you to, to, to wrestle with. I think it is important, um, as far as context perhaps is concerned, especially if this is. Interesting to you. Um, we won't necessarily go through this, though. We won't necessarily need to touch on this. The, the court's sort of take on it is, is good and sufficient for our purposes, but. It's there. So just FYI, when they're referring to this kind of ongoing historical debate. Uh, that's where. That's where it comes from. And it's included in the opinion, but of course, we're not having to read. Whatever this is, forty pages. I think there's like, gosh, ten pages of footnotes at the end as well. So anyway, let's get into, uh, Justice Rutledge's opinion. And start out with this quote. So with Jefferson, Madison believed that to tolerate any fragment of establishment. Would be by so much to perpetuate restraint upon that freedom. Hence, he sought to tear out the institution, not partially, but root. And branch and to bar its return forever. So Justice Rutledge here is really looking at this from a, um. You know, historical point of view, sure. But also sort of a, a ten-thousand-foot view of why we even have this establishment clause. He looks through the historical analysis at this, um, concept, right, this debate of separation of church and state. And sees that any sort of ground. Given, really, one way or another, uh, you know, Justice Rutledge could be the most devout Catholic you've ever met. I actually don't know. It's, it's an interesting question, like I mentioned earlier, too, but. Let's just say that he is. He would recognize, though, from the historical point of view, that any sort of ground given that would breach that wall separation. Would be devastating, would, would erode and undermine any sort of religious protection. So the government. Has to be completely free and clear of. The church, of any kind of religious institution. But in the same way, there also has to be no sort of influence from the church onto the government. So it's a very stark line there. And so that's what he argues, as we'll see a little bit later on. Uh, Madison's main point was. So he gets into the facts of this case. Here, parents pay money to send their children to parochial schools. And funds raised by taxation are used to reimburse them. This not only helps the children to get to school and the parents to send them. It aids them in a substantial way to get the very thing which they are sent to the particular school to secure, namely, religious training and teaching. Each thus pays taxes also to support the teaching of his own religion. An exaction equally forbidden since it denies the comfortable liberty. Of giving one's contribution to the particular agency of instruction he approves. New Jersey's action therefore exactly fits the type of exaction and the kind of evil at which Madison and Jefferson struck. So. His argument is more along the lines of. Any kind of aid, right? Anything that gets even remotely close to. Supporting or establishing religion is sufficient for violating the first amendment. So, you know, let's just go back to the kind of our, our, our inter-introduction to this case. Children generally go to school, right? How, right? Transportation. They have to get from one place to another. In order to be schooled, in order to be educated. We may even say right now, there's a certain mode of transportation that's taking place. I'm recording this on. Whatever today's day is, you're gonna be watching it at whatever day that is. There's gonna be a gap in time, but somehow this content. Hopefully it's educational, right? Hopefully there's, there's ideas that are generating in your mind that you're, you're able to wrestle with. Is going to be transported to you through internet, right? Through this medium of, of recording and lecture and whatever else may be. It, it's, it's a fundamental truth with regard to education. There's a certain delivery mechanism that takes place. So we're situated in nineteen forty-seven. Wasn't, weren't computers back then, right? Weren't, wasn't Zoom and, and I think I'm using Loom right now, believe it or not. Um, who knows what the kind of ooms there are, but anyway. Transportation still took place. It just involves children going from their homes to the schools. Now, some, of course, schools were public. Perhaps in their own neighborhoods, others were parochial, located in churches. But transportation still took place, which was in Justice Rutledge's mind. Fundamental. So the transportation aspect was fundamental to that education. It aids them in a substantial way to get the very thing which they're sent to the particular school to secure, namely, religious training and teaching. So in other words, even if it is neutral, right? Even if it is neutrally applied. The transportation aspect, I mean, quite literally, the vehicle to get them to the school. Is not neutral. Why? Because as soon as they're transported there, the whole point. Is to be educated in that religious setting. So any sort of aid. That's given to parents in furtherance of this sort of education. Necessarily violates the establishment clause. Again, he's, he's couching this in a sort of doomsday scenario. Uh, you know, we're gonna rip up the whole. Branches or the roots and branches to bar its return forever. So any sort of incremental. Positioning towards religious teaching and practices. Is enough to violate the establishment clause. Seems sort of severe, right? But I hope you see the argument. I hope you see the concept there. That students have to receive education. And they have to have some sort of transportation. Vehicle, if I can just say that, to get there. So in our case, again, it's a electronic mediums, the internets, or it can be recorded, downloaded, whatever else it may be. Then there's a physical transportation to get students from their homes to the schools. But that necessarily requires. Respecting the sta- But that necessarily requires respecting the establishment of religion. By virtue of sending the students there through transportation and reimbursing parents for that, that fundamental component of transportation meant that the, the government are establishing or respecting at least religion. And any kind of incremental increase to or fro necessarily violates the Establishment Clause. So paying taxes also support the teaching of his own religion, uh, or sorry, each thus pays taxes also to support his own religion, an exaction equally forbidden since it denies the comfortable liberty of giving one's contribution to particular agency of instruction he approves. So if I, as a taxpayer, or I think Everson in this case, whatever his name was, uh, ha- ha- in theory, using his tax dollars to pay and support a student's education that we may not believe in, uh, that violates my constitutional rights. My tax dollars should not be used to support education that I do not believe in or I do not abide by. Okay, sidebar, what is religion? What is education? How do we know of what is being taught in the schools? So his, his opinion, right, his, his dissent is getting to this concept that when students are being sent to a given institution, they're being transported there. If that institution is teaching or professing a given uh philosophy, religion, theology, whatever it may be, that is not conducive to one's own personal beliefs, then in theory, that's violating the Establishment Clause, right? Each thus pays taxes also to support the teaching of his own religion, an exaction equally forbidden since it denies the comfortable liberty of giving one's contribution to particular agency of instruction he approves. Okay, so default provision, right? Real quick, public education. What if they're teaching certain things that conflict with one's religious tendencies? Right? Or beliefs or convictions. Call it what you need to. At least the way the court's operating right now is that the public school, and I should say the dissent, excuse me, the dissent is operating right now, is that public schools somehow teach a neutral education. So the laws that apply to reimbursing bus fares are not neutral because they're sending uh reimbursement checks to parents that would otherwise send their students to a Catholic school, right, or a private school or any other kind of Christian school. Maybe we're digging into later on, but let, let's keep going. Okay, so he tees up this argument. He's looking at it, looking at the historical analysis, saying, nothing can give ground. We're ripping up all the roots, tearing down all the branches. Any sort of incremental progress towards or respecting of that religion would necessarily violate the Establishment Clause. Transporting the students there is a necessary condition for educating the students. So it would follow that reimbursing uh the parents for bus fare to send their students to this given school would in fact violate the Establishment Clause. Why? Because a given taxpayer, like the guy that's promulgating this lawsuit would argue that the Catholic beliefs and doctrine violate his own convictions. We got, we should say out of it. So it does not deny the value or the necessity for religious training, teaching or observance, obs- observance. Rather, it secures their free exercise, but to that end, does not deny that the state can undertake or sustain them in any form or degree. For this reason, the sphere of religious activity as distinguished from the secular intellectual liberties has been given the twofold protection and as the state cannot forbid, neither can it perform or aid in performing the religious function. The dual prohibition makes that function altogether private. It cannot be made a public one by legislative acts. I think that's the last one. So what we're looking at here is a, a dual-edged sword, right? The, the Establishment Clause gives both the negative um aspect of no law can respect the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. So there's, there's a kind of a negative and a positive there. We don't want the government to step in and prohibit any sort of exercise, take kind of that negative approach, but we don't want the government to come in and establish and take that positive side. There's that sort of two-sided um aspect of the Establishment Clause that the court is also looking at. And so it, he, I think he, the, the sending judge here, uh, Justice Rutledge, is looking at this lens of historical analysis to see, okay, if we take this to its extreme and we zoom out to a ten thousand-foot view and we see how these incremental changes in increasing towards uh respecting the religion or prohibiting the religion could invariably become this massive burden that uh the, the United States was basically trying to avoid at its, at its conception. We look at this and we see that there is a twofold protection, right? We see that there is both a positive and a negative aspect of it. But it's private, it's private in nature. So it cannot be made public by legislative act. There cannot be a law, for example, that would be on the books to ultimately aid the transportation, support the education of students that are going to non-public schools. So we'll, we'll dig into that a little bit more with the questions. Uh, it's, it's worth reading. Like I said, from the, the jump to, it's a um uh hotly contested issue now. And I think you may hear that in, in the conversations you have in your church, school, your homes, whatever else may be. So there, there's a lot to pull out. Um, you know, I wish we had more time. It looks like I'm already over time here. Uh, but all that to say, in summary, we have uh the law in place that basically reimburses uh families for transporting their, their child to school. Question comes up, though, as far as whether the law necessarily violates Establishment Clause, because it'd also reimburse students that are going to Catholic school, or just at least non-public school. So if it's establishing a religion by virtue of its support, its monetary support, then it'd certainly look like it's uh violating the Constitution. Majority opinion comes down and says, nope, it's neutrally applied. And the dissent looks at it and says, well, no, it's not neutrally applied. There is a support aspect here, an encouragement aspect here. And we're trying to avoid that at all costs. Let's look at the history of the situation and, and get into those um uh debates that Jefferson and Madison uh had and uh with other, other folks um at that time. So Everson, the Board of Education, uh, very interesting case, in my opinion. Hopefully found this uh entertaining and encouraging and uh informative as well. Uh, hopefully the, the questions will help us dive a little bit deeper and reckon reconcile and uh start working with these, these different concepts in this case. But in the meantime, uh, pray that you have a blessed week. Pray that this encourages you as always. Uh, keep sending me emails, ask those questions. You're asking phenomenal questions. I'm just you know, blown away uh with, with uh how y'all address and handle and reconcile a lot of these concepts. So keep after it, um, and I'll see you next time.